At that time, nobody would bid on it because nobody had any that this bed was built for this truck. And nobody would give us a price for it. So I was in the, we were in the dark at that.
Well, you're in the dark, but you knew it's gonna have to have a bed, didn't you?
Yes, yeah, but we didn't know what.
But you didn't budget?
Yeah, I didn't budget for it. I figured we'd just pay out of maintenance or something on it. But since we had that auction and stuff on that equipment we had, we should have enough money to use that auction money to take and pay for that.
So there's not gonna have to be a special amendment for his, or is it gonna be within his line items?
No.
No.
It needs to be paid out of the vehicle line item. He has extra money right now in his heavy equipment repairs line, but there's no telling what's gonna happen between now and the end of the year. In my opinion, it would be simpler to amend for the equipment upgrades, the vehicle upgrades, rather than take it out of heavy equipment repairs and then have them in later if we have heavy equipment repair issues. There were funds available from the surplus auction. I don't remember exactly what the dollar was in Ruin Bridge right now. But again, we would have to come forward and set a special budget for those funds to be able to spend those funds, which again will delay paying spiller cost and pitches again.
I'm gonna tell you why I'm concerned is, is how do we perceive this as a grave public necessity amendments in circumstance for pitches?
Not necessarily a grave public necessity, but the vehicle couldn't have been used toward the purpose that it was. And the cost has been incurred. Again, just like I mentioned at the last meeting, there are proper procedures for spending money that's not in the budget. It should have come before court before it's been addressed.
It's already on the truck, Bill?
On the truck.
We got a payment.
The bed is a utility box bed.
Low profile bed, that's what it is. At that time, like I said, when we were doing it, nobody would give me a price. They wouldn't even give me an idea what it was gonna cost.
We couldn't order the truck with the bed already on it?
No. Just a cabin chassis, all that stuff.
It includes, in that eleven thousand, it includes a front end replacement, it includes step bars, it includes light kits, light mounting kits, paint for truck accessories, Titan hitch combo, fabricated headache rack, front and back.
Headache rack is set up on it to haul corrugated pipe on it, off to the fields and stuff.
It's already done and has to be paid for, and it's just how it was supposed to be. After approving amendment budget, that's the best way to do it, you're saying?
Well, you've got money in the vehicle, get it right, vehicle purchase, around thirty-four thousand.
But all that money is specifically budgeted for specific things to be purchased?
Like the money that's left there is budgeted for.
Water truck?
Water truck, anywhere, yes, small water truck.
That hasn't been purchased yet?
It's not, it's not purchased yet?
No, we're just kinda, what I'm doing is looking for by a usual so we don't have to spend that much.
Just to, just to be in compliance with the law legally here so we don't catch ourselves in binding. We got, what, two, three more months till, now we got four months? Six months? I'm jumping the gun.
Time flies when you have it.
Yeah. I'm jumping the gun. And that thirty-four thousand is set for that water truck?
Correct.
Yes.
When the budget was done, it was specific to the vehicles to be purchased.
And if we get that, and you don't remember how much money we had from the surplus?
It was twelve thousand or something.
Was it, I thought it was twelve?
Well, to Ruin Bridge.
Right. Right, it was a hundred and two, something, all of it, but it was twelve something to Ruin Bridge.
All of it, yeah.
I don't wanna say double workable on it, but would it be easier to move from the line item of that heavy equipment repairs? And then if he had heavy equipment repairs?
But then how are you gonna be able to substantiate that those heavy equipment repairs? Would have our grave public necessity, or what happens if it's a hundred thousand dollars?
I'm just gonna tell you, deserves to be.
Well, I'm saying, you don't want to take the business.
Yeah, I just wanna, I wanna keep us, I wanna keep us safe on that. Not that we, of course, we have to pay for it, it's already done and everything, but how do we pay for it legally? We could, we could, I know that it'll delay it a little bit, but we could put the money from surplus in its own line item and then move it over here, but it may still not be enough, right?
Well, we wouldn't be moving it over here, it would be a special individualizing budget.
But if it's a vehicle that they bought, it's like buying a vehicle, you gonna get a vehicle without tires, the tires come with it. But this bed was bought for that truck, so it oughta come out of the vehicle especially.
Right, and when the auditors come in and they set up our capital assets, it will be included as a cost of that vehicle. It's not something that you can take and use on this vehicle today and two weeks and use it on the other.
I know, but that's what I'm saying, so the money that's in the vehicle purchasing, you can't use that money to put that toward that, that vehicle, because that vehicle was bought with that, with that fund, right?
The actual cost of that vehicle was paid for what we got, this is in addition to it. If Jeff wants to forego the water truck or come back at the time he finds one before he buys it, can we address him in the budget?
That might be a better idea, Jeff.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest to do.
Because you got fifty-four thousand or something in the equipment.
Right. And we can, we can surpass until, till Halloween here to get another truck. We got the one that we're working with now, plus the big tanker. We, the little truck could be for the little jobs and stuff, but we'll surpass and be able to keep working on what we need to keep working to keep going. And just, we'll just make do.
So we take it out of there and then put the twelve thousand from surplus back in there? So you'll be shy of a thousand something?
No, what Jeff is saying now is he's not gonna buy.
The water truck.
Right.
The small water truck that is in the budget out of vehicles now. We'll use part of that money.
To pay for this.
To pay for this.
Right.
If he finds one, he'll come back to court if it exceeds whatever dollars are left and address it before it's bought.
And then you can use your surplus funds, we could always go back and budget those, we could budget those.
I think that's a logical way to do it.
Keep us on the clear?
Yeah, I mean, 'cause that's what that truck is for, that's what the bed is for.
Right. And you really, really look at it, you just, you're only off a thousand something if you're gonna end up using the surplus.
That's right.
But anyways, right, so you're only off a thousand fifteen hundred.
He's off about thirteen nine.
Yeah, you're not really off much. If we do it like this and it keeps us safe.
That's a crew truck that when the guys go out do the concrete work, everything, all the ones are in the truck.
Of course.
Yeah, it is.
We got, that's a truck with people, a sign engine truck.
Okay.
Did we get all that, Lil' Lana? Wait a second.
Well, we need that in our budget, that's why.
So we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to approve the invoices. We can approve it as written, and then we go to twenty-third, we can talk, twenty-three, we can talk about the amendment, how's that?
Okay, fine. I'll make the motion to approve item number twenty-two, agenda item number twenty-two out of it.
This is the highest segment?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries five zero. Now let's go to the discuss approve amending the budget.
Okay, we will not need to amend at this point in time, if we're still taking it out of the vehicle line item, we're just foregoing the purchase of the additional vehicle at this time.
And then we can redo the other money when he needs it, okay? So, no action number twenty-four?
Twenty thousand dollars left for that water truck, yeah?
Right. Number twenty-four? Number twenty-four is discuss approve, disapprove, continue rental of the seven seventy-two GX Motor Grader home RDO equipment at sixty-nine thirteen eighteen a month. Road bid, budget requires amendment this rental, a number of months the rental is required to complete the budget amendment.
I have since received a copy of the rental agreement and it is currently for a period of January two thousand and thirteen through October two thousand and thirteen for ten months. We can't have a rental agreement that goes past our fiscal year and come with funds that are not incomparable yet. So the rental agreement would need to end September thirtieth. If it's gonna be that long, are you gonna keep it that long, or are you planning a, like you talked about with the road?
You might as well purchase this and then later, you know, take one of the old, old ones that require.
Does the rent wanna go towards purchasing this?
Yes, everything you put in on the machine goes as purchase.
And they gave us about a thirty thousand dollar discount?
They'll give us, it'll be pretty close to that, yeah, it'll be pretty close range to that, yeah.
Thirty thousand off the original purchase price?
It'll be from the twenties to the thirties, he told me, yeah.
From the original purchase price?
Original purchase price, yes. Because it'll, what it does, it makes it a rental piece of equipment. You get a cheaper price.
Because it's used.
Knocks off the.
That exceeds the line item for the rental at this time.
Correct, because there was nothing budgeted for the rental of a motor grader because the court purchased two new motor graders. We need a copy of a corrected rental agreement, in my opinion. We need a copy of the proposal if we do purchase this. All I have is the, I don't have anything that shows there's a discount because it's what the original cost is, what the discount is, minus the rent, what the purchase would be.
Discount on the motor grader, so.
What do you say to?
But right now, I have a rental agreement that extends through October. We need a rental agreement that only goes through September. So then the court needs to decide if it's going to enter into the rental agreement for nine, for, for September thirtieth, and then after that, then we need to go to the next one and amend to pay for it.
Actually, we have.
But it's earmarked for specific rents, a roller, the dozer.
Not this one.
That's correct.
Are you gonna amend that other stuff in the budget?
One roller, the one roller, we're probably gonna turn back in, we have two of them because we were needing to do a lot of work. You know, we'll most probably go down to one roller. Because the John Bear that we, I mean, that roller we got rid of, there was just too much to repair to keep it going. And every time we wanted to use it, we were repairing it, and that's the reason we got rid of it. They didn't, they wouldn't even consider taking it on the trade because it's too old, nobody wants that old stuff.
What's in the current budget as far as equipment rental is the dozer and one roller? And currently, we have two, he's returning one, and then we have the dozer.
The dozer, we're gonna pay for it.
Haven't seen any purchase paperwork.
For any of us to buy.
With the.
Should be pretty close.
They're gonna come evaluate that, the maintainer we're trying to, trying to fix up and run, but they won't take it if it's not moving. As soon as I get that maintainer moving, I have to put some money into it, but he's. He wanted to tell us what it's gonna be, and he said it'll be in the neighborhood of what we have for the other one on trade. So it's in the thirty thousand plus earmark, so that's what we'll be looking at.
Then the dozer's how much a month?
Three thousand nine hundred and something.
Yeah, three something, yeah.
Okay, where are you on the rental on that, where are you on that?
That was budgeted for a full year.
Yeah.
So it'd be six months into the year.
Yeah, yeah.
But that one's covered.
When I get that maintainer, then that's gonna take that off because we'll trade that maintainer on that dozer.
So what do we need to do to fix you today, Jeff? That's where we're at, what do we need to do?
If y'all approve the maintainer rental on it, we're using it because we found out that a six-wheel drive we can use in so many places for ripping these roads and building these roads, it's a necessity habit, but the court says get rid of it, we'll get rid of it, but it'd just take longer for us to do our jobs.
Okay, the rental, as of March thirty-first, the rental line item, you had a balance of fifty-four thousand, correct? To do the motor grader for the next six, nine months, that's what, like sixty-nine thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and then counting, I start counting the additional roller that you have.
The one roller, we're gonna turn back in because we're not gonna be, now we got the point, we split the two out. We're running one, one crew right now, so we're most probably won't be needing a roller.
I guess my question is, we're down probably, the line item is seventy thousand dollars, and I think we're down now, my rough guess, about seventy thousand dollars right now to finish the year with.
But that's earmarked for the specific, the roller and the dozer. We would need to amend the budget.
Sixty-nine thousand.
Sixty-nine thousand one hundred thirty-one dollars and eighty cents.
That's what I'm saying.
To rent that.
We're short seventy thousand dollars on that line item. If the line item would've been a hundred and forty thousand to rent it to start with, we'd get it, that's what I'm getting at.
The question there is, goes back to the same thing, is it a great public necessity?
Need to keep it operating.
Yeah, okay.
We need to keep getting work done, we're behind on roads now.
But then if it's a grave public necessity, why wouldn't we include it? It'd include two brand new ones.
It did include two brand new ones?
Yes.
And this one, they're giving him a pretty good deal, 'cause the first one that was bought broke down. It was in one week. So the contract read that they brought us this new one that he's using as a rental now for a loner until they got that other one fixed and back to us, and that he was driving it and everything, and he said he liked the machine, and they said they would knock off between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So if they're gonna knock that off your price, and then we can rent it to own it, why would they have to go ahead and buy it? To do it, for that fee? Because this is about a three hundred thousand dollar machine, we're gonna get it for about two hundred and thirty bucks. We're gonna get a little bit more than what the new ones cost, but it's such a bigger machine. Again, my question is, on the equipment purchase money that's left over with that, can that money be utilized to apply toward the rent?
Not having the budget in front of me, I'm not sure what equipment purchase money hasn't been used.
I think it's like, I'm gonna say thirty, forty thousand.
Again, the equipment purchases were specific to items to be purchased. The whole problem goes back to the fact that this did not come.
The original?
Well, no. When Jeff got this piece of equipment as a loner and he liked it, he should've come to court then and said, "I can rent this on a rent-to-own, here's all the paperwork, black and white," and we wouldn't be in this problem because at that point, we could've said, "Okay, we're not doing it for, okay." But now we've already incurred January, February, March, three months of rent, we gotta pay, we have to pay, and we need to know whether we're extending it for the budget.
So I guess the question then becomes, if this is something you need to be able to do your job and meet the needs of the public, is it a grave public necessity?
This, this machine is doing twice what the other ones can do when we're working on it. It is actually, it helps a lot. We can rip up the roads and bring them up a lot, lot faster, it walks away from those equipments.
The roads that are compacted so much that he works on now, the regular motor grader, you burn up more and cutting it, just trying to bust a little open those roads to, to, to even build them back up. The ripper he's using, this, this machine, what I understand Jeffrey is saying now, he's got capabilities where he can rip the roads a lot quicker and easier and save money on the cutting that's gonna burn up.
It may be cost effective, but is it a grave public necessity?
Yeah, and I hear you, right, but it's cost effective.
And granted, we all know the decision is up to the court, not to anyone else, and as always, I've always abided by the decisions of the court as far as budget amendment and spending the money. But the court needs to determine if it's an emergency or a grave public necessity.
I guess we could look at it.
Open transportation to.
Well, and also, how many people is he down, he needs to equip real work, I mean, we can't just deny people public services. I mean, I'm in, I'm in a quandary because I don't wanna leave you out there by yourself.
You're twenty-two people budgeted, but you only got what, eleven?
Yeah, that'll work, yeah.
And so.
I was gonna come back to Ms. Jasper, can I ask, have to advise again because we're, we're not getting anybody walking through the door. Once in a while, you get somebody to walk through the door and tell them what we pay, and they grab their file and they walk out, they say they don't, you know, can't work for that. So that's, that's the problem we're having. We can't get anybody for the amount that we pay and compete with all companies, we just can't.
Okay, then let's go back to this one though, Jeff, let's, we'll work, let's work on that later, but let's figure out what we need to do to help you today. Let's get you through today.
What I'm afraid of, Jeff, is you said you got eleven, you're budgeted for twenty-two, but you only have eleven, right? Okay, somebody can easily come up and say, "Well, if you only have eleven, why do you need another motor grader? You only have eleven people there, you don't have enough people to run all the equipment as it is now." But you can always come back and say, "Well, this one does it twice as much as one of the other ones, so one guy does twice as much as you'd have two guys," they were saying, "There are two blades out there."
You can do a lot more.
I mean, you can, we can sit here and argue the fact all day long, where people are, people are gonna come out with all kinds of stuff that we could sit here and argue for two or three hours, but Herb, sorry, I'm looking at you. You knew somebody was gonna say, you knew someone was gonna call you out.
You're, you're okay.
What do you, what do you think? I mean, is there any way that, I understand it's for the public, and we want the public to be safe one hundred percent?
It's a commissioner's court decision. It's unforeseen circumstance, and it is a grave necessity, it's far as the road is concerned, in my opinion.
I think, I think the way that we sometimes need to look at this too, is, you know, I live on this little nice paved city street. If I lived down on one of these county roads that we couldn't get through, I would say, yes, it's a grave public necessity for an ambulance or a school bus or something, we've already had a school bus accident, we've had children injured, we've had accidents on county roads, I think it's a grave public necessity to be able to keep up those roads and give Jeff the tools to be able to keep up those roads. It wasn't budgeted, I mean, with this eagle for six, it's just, we're struggling, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Jeff, are those other two motor graders on the road every day too?
Yeah.
They're on the road, how many motor graders do you have running right now?
We got, this morning, there's four, four that are working.
There's four? But the two more ones?
And we got one in the shop, and we're working on one at the, at the yard right now, and we got another one that I need to bring in and work on because you're looking at seven model equipment, and we're having the bookings of little, little problems that keep us shut down all day, sometimes two, three days. Exactly, you turn the key and the machine goes to work, if I got a problem. And it's per se, when you.
I think we can do it, I think it's, I think it is a grave public necessity.
Two weeks, two weeks ago, John Bear.
If nothing happens to a bus or anything, or something out there, we can back it up, we can think it was a grave public necessity, we're sorry that happened. You know, that's always my concern.
How much do we need to amend the budget for?
Sixty-nine thousand one hundred thirty-one dollars and eighty cents?
Ten months times the monthly.
Ten months, nine months. Better do nine months.
Nine months.
I think, because you don't wanna go to ten months.
January, February, April, May, June, July, August, September, November.
And the other money that's in there, it's already earmarked for, for the dozer and for the roller?
That being sixty-two thousand?
Yes.
Two eighteen sixty-two, there, right?
We got a calculator there on here.
That's what I got. I was gonna share my, my right eye, my, miscalculated.
Guys, this is one of those lose-lose situations. Regardless of the decision we make right now, we're gonna carry the heat. We're gonna carry the heat if the road didn't get fixed, and we're gonna carry the heat if we amend the budget. It's just up to us if Charlie wants to grade it as a necessity.
That's why I was asking, if all the other graders are on the road, they're, they're on the road, they're doing their job, and this one here, you need it, it's, it's on the road every day too, this one here?
Like, like, rip and, rip and bring it up, roads litter right now.
It's nonstop.
Herb, do you think we could call it a grave public necessity?
So that's one of your main machines?
Yeah, right.
I'm getting a yes from Mr. Hancock.
I always think it's a grave necessity due to the fact that.
All right, let's go.
If our county attorney backs it up on it, then I think we'll be fine.
If Herb says yes, I'm with Herb.
I think, if the county attorney backs it up, it's still fine.
That's gonna be number twenty-four that we need to motion.
I'll make the motion approved, no.
As written?
As written.
For nine months?
For nine months.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? None, motion carries five zero.
And you need to get up and send a contact.
Jeff, hit on that paperwork today, please, get to the one, let's get Carol copies.
Next time, man, like, the one that said please, I don't know, ahead of time.
Yeah, come in.
Please.
You're making us hot, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Got a whole new meeting to hot seat, okay. Number twenty-five, acknowledgment of inclusion of special project coordinator in employee blanket bond. Court previously authorized the bond for special projects coordinator, three twelve thirteen, but a separate bond is not necessary. So you just wanna tell us that, why, on record?
Jerry Frazier came to me and said that that position is covered under the employee blanket, blanket bond, which has a fifty thousand dollar on there, fifty thousand dollar bond amount, and that has been in effect since January first nineteen ninety-one, and it does not have a cancellation date. And basically, that bond includes all employees that are not bondable officials.
Okay, so number twen, number twenty-six, is to discuss approve, disapprove amendment of the fiscal year two thousand and thirteen budget to allow for distribution of crime stopper's monies. Commissioner's court approved the action two twenty-eight thirteen. Lil' Lana, I have a question on that one, is that really an amendment, or are we just giving them their money?
It's an amendment to be able to give that money. We did not budget anything to be spent out of those funds, so to be able to get it out of the county monies, to give it, spend it, anywhere else, we have to amend the budget.
And statutorily, we can't withhold it from them, we have to give it to them, right?
And the court already passed the action to give them the funds.
So we just need to.
Amendment to allow me to write the check.
I'm, the, as I have twenty-six is stated.
All right, second.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? None, motion.
No, not a whole lot, I'm forty.
Motion carries five zero. You're fine. Number twenty-seven, review approve endorsement increase penalty bond to the state of Texas for preemie and sac, Barnes County tax assessor collector from twenty-seven thousand one hundred dollars to ninety-six thousand dollars. The bond amount is calculated at five percent of the net state motor vehicle tax and use tax and motor vehicle registration selected by the county in the past twelve months.
Okay, I got a call from the cost over last week. Historically, the bond has been twenty-seven one with the, they said in the last twelve months, there's been over two million dollars in vehicle business to our office, and it's, the bond can go anywhere from twenty-five hundred to a max of a hundred thousand. And they got me said, they, somebody needs to be ninety-six thousand right now.
And you're not there?
No, I'm at twenty-seven one, which is what has been historically.
So we have to do it, you have a choice.
Yeah, make the motion to approve.
That's right.
Agenda item number twenty-seven as well.
All right, second.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? None, motion carries five zero. Number twenty-eight is to discuss approve, disapprove amending the budget in the amount of three hundred and sixty dollars for the endorsement to increase the state bond for the preemie and sac of the Barnes County tax assessor collector. Obviously, it's an unforeseen circumstance if they called her and told her she doesn't do it.
Make the motion to approve, I don't know.
Is that correct, Herb? Okay. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? None, motion carries five zero. Number thirty is to discuss approve, disapprove amending the budget in the amount of due twenty thousand dollars from unencumbered funds to the DPS trooper hotel fund declaring an emergency and authorizing the resolution, finding conformity with local government code one one zero zero one zero. Shelby?
I put that on the agenda, I noticed on the budget the other day that the DPS fund is down about six thousand dollars. I talked with Lil' Lana the other day about it, and, you know, she said that they're averaging probably, what, three thousand a month, one would say?
Depends on how many times they come down. Approximately three thousand dollars a state.
And, and the DPS troopers have been providing the service, I feel, you know, the first one was by Marathon, I believe, Marathon. They go ahead and, and I think the county can at least partner up with them and, and go ahead and finish that until next year, do the budget check. All right, I'm, I'm making the motion.
Can I, can I show you something before we do that, though? Before we do that, just to save face, and I talked to Shelby and Herb went here on Friday, so. Actually, when I do go to Ross, I do it for the quote, Barbara has no interest, Ross is Barnes County's attorney or special counsel. He did draw up this for you, Shelby, in a resolution form, in case you were questioned. I did also call Sergeant Christian yesterday, and I talked to Sergeant Christian about the fact that when we were paying for the rooms for Marathon, I don't, I think we just paid them straight out, quick, Lil' Lana?
Paid direct.
Right, and I don't know how this will work, or how it's gonna function, or how we want it to function. Sometimes the state, and I hate, you know, I don't wanna speak out loud for the state, but we'll have the per diem sometimes at home. I asked him if they were able to fund the per diem to help us out in any way, would they please do it? Because, I mean, I hate to say it, but the gold standard out on the highway is a black and white car. And, I mean, they do save lives, they stop the, I mean, they slow people down, they do all that stuff. And, I mean, when you see a black and white, you're gonna take your foot off that, that gas, you're gonna try to behave a little bit. So I think when the Texas thunder comes in here, they're doing us a world of good, especially with all the deaths. Our fatality rate is just astronomical, I'm driving the sheriff crazy on weekends, and he programmed me as do not answer because every time I hear air life, and I think that they really, really do that for us. So before we do that, you'll see how this is written up in one 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 zero one zero, it is a resolution for us to be able to sign, to file with, to file with Carol in case we aren't questioned on that, so.
You know, and Lil' Lana did make comments, meaning rightfully so, that, you know, we maybe should try again to solicit a ton from the industry to help offset future costs, and that's probably we can do the next budget check.
And I will, I will go back to the industry, and I will, as y'all know, it doesn't phase need ask for money. And I think one thing we need to think about, though, too, is these are our citizens, just as much as they're anybody else's, and while we appreciate that, the Legislative Budget Board has a three percent raise budgeted for the next biennium for troopers. So we are gonna have to fight to get Texas, everybody's gonna be fighting over Texas thunder. And I think if we have that little bit of edge, we might be able to get them to prevent anybody else because troopers are not gonna be busting down the door for a three percent biennium raise right now.
So, with that all being said, I'm gonna make a motion because, or not quit.
Okay, in discussion last year with the DPS, the lieutenant, Martinez. They said we have seventy-seven dollar per diem for a motel. And down here, hotels were two hundred twenty-two dollars or whatever it is.
Two hundred twenty-nine.
Two hundred twenty-nine dollars. Alright, so, anyway, they were saying in San Antonio, and that's where we came about. We've got some private money to fund their motel stays here, so they could spend full-time here, not have to drive back to San Antonio to stay in hotels. So we don't know whether we can get this seventy-seven dollar per day, per diem to pay their port, that's what we're gonna check into.
But I asked them if they could, would they?
Yes, and so, anyway. We can approve some amount for them, uh, whatever amount we state, whatever it is, but hopefully, we won't pay the full amount, but we'll get to.
Get some assistance.
You can stay downtown San Antonio at a former historic hotel cheaper than you can stay in Kansas City. That's the eagle. So I got a motion from Shelby.
This is a great public necessity.
It is. These are our people.
Yeah, I agree with that. I agree.
I know he likes seeing them, don't you?
Well, I mean, I, you know.
They help him.
I think that partnering with the industry is, is a, is a good move as well.
Partnering with the state, the industry, anybody we can right now for public safety.
My motion stands before you as presented with the amount of twenty-five thousand, that's listed on the, uh, agenda, is out of thirty.
I see.
Just in case y'all sign it illegally.
One way to turn the whole motion over before I sign it.
Uh, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? None, motion carries five zero. Tax collector report, Brenda.
For the month of March. For the county, taxes collected the month of March, thirty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. Year to date, seven million, seven hundred forty-four thousand dollars and forty, ah, seven million, seven hundred forty-four thousand, forty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents. Per collection rate of ninety-six point one-two-seven percent. That's on the current roll, on the delinquent roll. For the month of March, eight thousand, thirty-six dollars and ten cents. Year to date, fifty-five thousand, one oh three oh six. Percent collected, twenty-seven point six-four-eight percent. Okay, Roden Bridge, for the month of March, collected seven thousand, eight seventy-nine thirty-five. Year to date, one million, eight fifty-five, eight seventy-six, seventy-eight, per collection rate of ninety-six point one-six percent. Delinquent, collected on Roden Bridge, for the month of March, seven hundred sixty-one dollars and eighty cents. Year to date, six mil, excuse me, six thousand, one oh three oh eight. Percent collected, thirty-two point seven-four percent.
Thank you, Brenda. I got one.
Is anybody in Eagle Ford that's producer of anybody delinquent last year?
No, not, not me.
Come in.
I'd have to look on my list. Shelby was working that list yesterday. There's some, uh, companies, but they're not the big producers. Rural Fire for the month of March. Uh, current roll, four thousand, two eighty-five oh one, year to date, nine hundred sixty-eight thousand, five sixty-five twenty-one. Delinquent roll, uh, for the month of March, Rural Fire, four hundred fifty-five dollars and ninety-two cents. Year to date, three thousand, five hundred thirteen dollars and forty-three cents. Or, uh, percent collected on the delinquent roll of thirty-seven point two-six-five percent.
Thank you, Brenda, I'm sorry. Buy, discuss examine, approve, disapprove, your report buy, treasurer's report.
Leave everyone got a copy of it yesterday and Shelby, I emailed you.
Yes, thank you.
And I had my mark here, hold on, what did I do with it? My stack of.
It says Judge on top of it, because I made sure you got the one that was signed.
Thank you. Yes, I saw that, just what did I do with it? You can go ahead, buy, you can go ahead and talk, I can look. Oh, I don't even say you do it. Other than the link paperless, you can just click a button and you can find that. Come on. It says Judge on top.
Yeah, it's because I signed it. No, it says Judge on.
Do you want to?
No, I have one, it's right here. Y'all need to sign it. She bought it, yeah.
It's your box.
Thank you. Actually, I want to buy it for me. And y'all are all good? Y'all are matching?
Yes.
Happy people this month?
Yes.
Alright. We just need a motion?
Make it, make the motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? None, motion carries five zero.
And Jeff Williams and Bart Minger here with you now for the lunch and learn, so I need to step up.
Okay, thank you. Payment of bills?
On page one, a little over halfway down, you'll see that in this bill cycle, we are including the twenty-five thousand dollars previously approved by court for the Children's Alliance of South Texas. We will also notice that those expenditures to spill our custom pitches on page seven that we previously discussed as far as amending the budget.
Is that for today?
Are included in this bill cycle. That could have been removed if it wouldn't have been approved. This bill cycle also includes the first and second quarter workers' compensation premiums payable to Texas Association of Counties. We did not receive the billing previously, that's why there's two quarters. Total expenditures this bill cycle are two hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred seventy-seven dollars and fifty-two cents.
Thank you, Diana.
It was, it was brought up by a citizen about Denton, Navarro, Ochoa, Bruno, is there any bills from them in this cycle?
No.
I'll make the motion to pay the bills as presented.
Well, I'm gonna speak, just remind, to begin this, but.
I see.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? None, motion carries five zero. Thank you, Congress. Report of fines, fees, and monies collected by the filing department, the county clerk. She handed me one, too.
The total was collected was sixty-one thousand, one hundred thirty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Thank you, Carol.
It's busy, Carol.
I have it all in order. Okay, the next one is going to be the district clerk. She left a report up here. You guys can look at it, she left it all to you yourself. Carol, did she give you a copy to file?
Yes, she did. For her criminal.
Oh, you don't have to see it, no, it's on. Yeah, but you don't have to. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
For her criminal, uh, report, she collected sixteen thousand, nine dollars. Restitution first was one thousand, two hundred thirty-seven dollars. Retained in county, seven thousand, five hundred two dollars and eighty-three cents. For her civil report, she collected seven thousand, five hundred sixty dollars and forty-eight cents. Dispersed, one hundred seventy-one dollars and thirty-four cents, so she retained seven thousand, three hundred eighty-nine dollars and forty-two cents.
Thank you. Justice of the peace. Let's get to it. I will go back to.
I'll do Judge Stewart's first, if you look on that first page. Judge Stewart collected thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and forty-seven cents. Retained, uh, twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-three, seventy-six. And what was dispersed is ten thousand, four hundred and twenty-one, seventy-one. On mine, there was a total of two hundred and thirty-six cases filed in my court. I collected seventy-two thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and fifty cents. The amount kept by the county was fifty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-four cents. Remitted to the state, twenty thousand, two hundred and thirty-six, twenty-six.
Do you have a question?
Sure.
People ask me, is this waystation paying off? I say, well, I'm sure it is.
Yes, sure it is.
Okay, do you line item out how many are from the waystation ticket?
Yes, I don't have that with me, but I can present it at the next, uh, the next meeting, I can do that.
Because people ask me, and I'd like to be able to tell them, so if you give that, I appreciate it.
Okay, I'll do that for, uh, next month, um, and I'll let the other courts also know to, uh, present that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Let's turn to the last page. For March of two thousand thirteen, new cases filed, precinct four were seventy-one. Total amount collected was twenty-six thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and seventy-six. The amount kept by the county was twenty thousand, one hundred dollars and ninety-eight cents. And remitted to the state was six thousand, five hundred dollars, five hundred and eight dollars and seventy-two cents.
Thank you so much. I got a copy, and actually, if y'all notice, it says second copy. Uh, Caroline left this here. And it's from January, I don't know what she wants me to do with it, but if you guys, I mean, if you guys can't make it, if you judges can't make it, and y'all want me to hand these out. There's one, two, three, four boxes back there, that's precinct one, precinct two, precinct three, and precinct four. And I will hand those out for you. If you'll just make copies, I'll disseminate them if you can't be here, or whatever you can't do. But that's their boxes, and I'll hand them out, but this is all she brought me, and it's from January. You can give it to Carol, I don't have anything up to date from her.
Uh, I think one thing you may say about the JP's, you might want to start looking at the caseload. The caseloads have increased enormously from what used to be in the past, and I think you need to remember that.
Yes, trip with. I went from seventy-five, maybe eighty cases, to over two hundred, and that's every month.
Daisy, I know we asked you once before, but you're not getting all of DPS, I mean, aren't y'all dividing that? I mean, at one time, I know they hit you all of them, they're not still giving you every ticket from that waystation, are they?
No.
I know that had become a concern at one point in time.
No, it's, it's not.
But I think it's something to remember.
Are they dividing them amongst the four of y'all, to kind of help y'all out?
I'm sure they are.
And I know you can't answer, but I'm just, you know, kind of curious. Alright, uh, the county attorney.
I think you've got it.
Yes, sir, I have it right here. Uh, I'm just looking to say, usually she puts a date on it. She did data for collections. One, one, she, up to date to three thirty-one thirteen, she's collected fifteen thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty-five cents. As compared to last year, she collected eleven thousand, six thirty-two, forty-three. And I think, you know, we're having court, a lot, a lot of courts, so thank you, Herb, it's gonna come through, Ms. Crabtree's a very busy little woman, collecting money. Special projects.
Thank you.
In development permits, we had, one, one, fifty-eight permits for a total of two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five. On septic permits, we had eighteen for a total of seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty.
If you kept up, or are you updating the mobile home parts you can?
Yes.
How many we up to now?
Uh, I'm not sure, but I, I'm keeping them updated as far as like when they come in, I add it to.
And are we going back and verifying that they're not, or actually verify that they're not, they're permitted for twenty-four, they may have forty-eight, how do we know?
I have, I don't have access to a vehicle right now, but I don't go out there on the roads. Brenda's the only one that's out on the roads, if she sees any out there, she'll let me know, like, I saw these parts, are they permitted? And she kind of keeps an eye out.
And is there anything in place that they all were permitted?
Uh, all I have to do is call them. Like I said, if she gives me an address and it's not matching the amount that she, that I have, the amount that she saw out there. I'll look it up and see, you know, if they're over or under, and I'll give them a call and let them know that they've come in and permitted.
Did I get everybody? Let's get you now, Eva probably didn't, Eva didn't do anything here. So I don't have anything for Eva. Number thirty-six is Jeff.
Y'all, quick, uh, update on, uh, three thirty-four, here about off and on with ninety-nine percent complete with that.
Three fifty-four.
Three fifty-four, yeah, you're right. And, um, we're, um, just by complete with that, I'm gonna get y'all the, what all company gave us and what I tossed it on that, we're working on that to break all of it down to see the actual cost on it, how close we hit it on it. And, uh, we're starting on the bottom now, we got some truck rolling, uh, renting some trucks. We're working on, Rick started that, uh, the other day, and, uh, we're also gonna be starting on three twenty-six, trying to complete that road there. Uh, we're gonna have to do some work, work on that first, uh, dollar. Got a call from him to give the pencil of, uh, so we can, uh, build that road back up, you know. Everybody, doing some patching, we did a bunch of paid patching, uh, and we still got some more to go. So we're not done yet, doing the paint patch.
Do you have, uh, any way to go back and look at what companies have paid or placed material cost for the companies that have given to the county? Do you ever went and tracked that, or do you?
I can go back to companies on, on that and ask them.
I think it would be good for, because I think some legislation might be coming down, we may need to know that.
Oh, there's numbers on there. See, like what we did on this one here, that three fifty-four, we have all the tickets, all the material that was, uh, don't make it, we have all that.
What I'm getting at is, when they come in and do work, we need to know exactly how much they're giving in kind to the county.
A pencil donation form, where you might talk to them, get one of those done. And if you can just take a large break out of your day one day and come, aggravate with your hand pop, so you can sit down and get that in writing.
Oh, okay, yeah.
We need to know that, because it's, I think it's legislation.
Matter of fact, Conical Phillips, uh, asked on that, on that part here, um, the other day.
JP's looking.
They left a message for me, and I need to return that phone call, and I think that's what it's about.
I think you and Herb could create, practically, and make a creation where at least that way, because, you know, they, they're not just giving us these materials, they're doing a tax write-off somewhere.
Oh, yeah, they are.
And so, we're getting a, uh, we're accepting a number, I think that needs to be a number that you at least are accepting in a donation form, so you can at least in kind return it to us here in the county.
Plus, it gives us a way to track cost that if we would have had to do something on that road, we kind of know where we're at for budgeting purposes in the long term.
Exactly, it'll help us all, so please sit down and do something.
Have pipes replaced and stuff like that, yeah.
I have a solution.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, Luanne?
As I mentioned, both reports coincided, of course, kind of are not two, and they're the same thing.
Y'all managed, uh, you got lots of them.
No, they coincided, they just were erroneous, because we're just here in the system. You'll go down to the page of debt requirements, you'll notice that the note to Alford Development for an international truck was paid during the last month. The final payment was ten thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. On the page. For of the front part, the combined statement of receipts and dispersals, the next to the last fund, Barnes Wilson Jewish Salvation Nation Department, bless you. that shows a negative balance of $1,209.42. Just wanna alert y'all that $37,939 was received in the system. On April 1st, the state actually released those forms on March 22nd. They did not show receipt, so therefore, I had not received it in the system. The final page, items of interest. Total county funds available as of March 31st, 2013, $24,827,168.31. Total county funds invested as of March 31st, $22,831,546.48. Total non-invested funds as of March 31st, 2013, $1,995,621.83. The sales tax collected and received as of March 31st, 2013, $736,460.76. Sales tax received for the same period in 2012, $562,865.51. The increase of $173,595.25 is approximately a 130.84% increase. But notice, March 2013, sales tax receipts decreased $99,368.8 from the February 2013 receipts. Again, the request for reimbursement number eight to the Texas Historical Commission is the amount of $16,315.45 was requested January 10th and has yet to be reimbursed.
One more, on the debt requirement. The bottom, that says roller. Jeff, what roller is that? Roller, what roller is that on the debt requirement? Can you help me?
That's that on, on the debt deal, that's the bubble.
Thank you.
Shelby?
Okay, one more. Can you say a 130% increase?
I'm gonna excuse myself for a second.
130%, oh, but it's not an increase, it's only a 30% increase. Sure.
Okay, I got a couple things. One, on the employee personnel policies. I've talked with Mr. Warren Worley out of San Antonio. I have yet to talk with the, with the people here yet, but he's able to come here next Friday and meet with everybody and explain the process. I just need to find out, y'all, y'all will be available, or y'all wanna do it in the afternoon, or a minute. But he'll have a, he'll have a process and also he'll have a proposal, no action to take, and anything, just gonna be informative type thing. Also, last week, this, this is not policy, but last week, went to Austin. We testified before the Energy Committee, met with Senator Zaffarini, we talked about the roads, we talked about the disposal well out of Corn City. And I have to say that to Judge Shaw's credit, she gave a very passionate testimony about Cornish County and the accident rates that have been having, and it got their attention. The, they were very receptive to what, what she had to say. So, but Senator Zaffarini was very open to the comments we had to talk about. Also, on the agenda next month, I'm gonna put, Hoff and Associates gonna come here and give a presentation on their, their proposals for road, road planning and stuff like that. Also, we've never rode, ridden Roden Bridge, called it a big one, it was 911 people. We had Central River Authority come down, we talked about floodplains, and did some planning on that, talking with them about also for a proposal for, for giving some of these floodplain requests. On another note, there's a Senate Bill 262 that's requiring counties to have, be able to 90%, 90% compliant disposition of cases. I know that Carol is right at 96%, and I, so I, I called the governor's office to get an overall of what Cornish County is at. We're at 92% overall of the county. And what that means is, we're in compliance, yet to be at least 90%. If you are within 90%, you will lose all funding for criminal justice grants that are currently in progress or in the future. But Cornish County is in good shape, it goes from the last five years, 2007 to 2012, right now we're at 92%. So I think everybody, I'm gonna commend everybody for doing a good job, because this is important. It's gonna affect funding for Duane and, and any other local enforcement agency within the county. Now, shut up.
Thank you very much.
Sherry, last, last month at ACOG, they told me we were at 89%, so I don't know who has that, they figured.
The governor's office.
I'm checking.
Yep, the governor's office, I've got Judy, I can give you her phone number. As a matter of fact, I have an email from Senator Zaffarini's office, very funny, of 92.
Okay, I talked to David Vogel a few days ago, he said he's got all the papers, he's supposed to send them, we're supposed to be finished with them. Apparently, he hadn't sent some paperwork. Luana, has Trugger been paid? We still haven't gotten that signed, did we, Trugger?
I couldn't tell you all the stuff in my head, I think everything, yeah.
He said Vogel, Vogel hadn't signed a paper, he had a question, you know, we sent him an email to him, Chris told me they hadn't been paid.
Well, everything that we have received, we've paid now, Vogel hasn't signed up on something, and still hasn't, or we haven't received it to pay it.
But anyway, on the, we're supposed to have everything, he's supposed to get all the paperwork, doing the final copies of paperwork, he said he's gonna UPS it down here. So I'm waiting, Silver told me there's a package that may be here today, still on. I checked on the, the unit in the computer room, it just burned up. I had a price of $1,100 something dollars, put one in there with a sump pump to pump the water out. Checked on one, I need to do some more checking on it. We can buy one for $200 bucks to put it in there like it was. We have to decide what we're gonna do with it. Anyway, I'm checking on that to get that taken away.
I don't have nothing with the recycling center right now. Chris?
Okay, for the month of March, and the permits of Roden Bridge, the road bores, water lines, gate entrances to all well, all well locations, money's taken in with $73,720.
Alright, the next time on the agendas to adjourn. All in favor? Any opposed? None. Motion carries, five zero. Thank you, everybody, travel safe.